Hello, okay. Good evening, we're ready to start the meeting. I call to order the meeting of Mayor and Alderman, March 31st, 2025, to order. It's 5:00 PM Central Daylight Time. We'll start with the prayer by our chaplain. Go stand and join me in prayer. Let us pray. Most mighty and gracious God, thank you for your beautiful creation, especially this mountain plateau. Thank you for the blessing of living in its glorious magnificence. As we approach the Easter season, we give you thanks for the gift of your only Son, to come and live among us, and to die and be risen, so that we may have eternal life. We ask your blessings upon the mayor and council members of this town. Give them wisdom to make decisions according to your will. Bless our first responders, especially law enforcement, firemen, and EMTs. Watch over and protect them, just as they watch over and protect your people. Bless and keep safe all those who work for this town, as we give thanks for their good work. It is, in the name of your precious Son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge to our nation's life. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. Okay, if we may have the roll call, please.
Present.
Grant.
Here.
Diane.
Present.
Here.
Here. You've received in your packet the minutes of the special called meeting and the regular February meeting. I'll accept a motion to approve them as submitted.
I'll make a motion to approve them with one exception. I think there was a date on the first or second paragraph that was off, if I'm not mistaken. It said March 4th, I believe. I don't know if you've got them in front of you, but...
Which minutes, the public hearing or the...
I'm sorry, it was the, uh, it was the minutes of the, um, of the actual meeting. I'm looking through it here.
Public hearing is the regular meeting?
Something about, there were some dates in here that were...
The planning commission meeting on March 4th?
Maybe it was the last page.
Last page.
It's like this, when they said the next planning commission meeting was gonna be on the 31st, and then it said something about March 4th.
What page is...
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but...
It's down the line, it says March 4th.
Yeah, calendar events, Fresh Mess, no, commission will meet, planning commission will meet March 4th.
Yeah, wasn't that for the planning commission? That was the planning commission date coming up.
All right, never mind, I'd make a motion to approve as written.
Thank you, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion or comments on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minister approved as submitted. Citizens' comments, does anyone wish to be heard from the citizenry?
What was the special meeting?
I think it was... That it was a public hearing to discuss the ordinance of the rate increases for water. That was the special meeting. Any citizens wish to be heard at this time? My communications, okay, let me repeat, Fresh Mess will be running from June through October on every Thursday. Uh, the Easter egg hunt will be April 12th at 11:00 AM here at Harden Pickett Park, I mean, Pickett Park, Anna Pickett Park. Uh, we hope to have the website, uh, the new revised website, uh, up within the next week or so.
It's up now.
It's up now, live? Okay, should beat the schedule. So take a look at that, if you need help getting on, contact us at City Hall and make sure, because this will be a prime source of communication to you all. April, April 28th is the next Mayor and Alderman meeting, April 1st, tomorrow, is the planning commission meeting for April. The INI sewer rehab project is almost done, their contract gives them to mid-April and they're slightly ahead of that schedule. There'll be a Phase 2 that follows, because we all knew at the time that Phase 1 would not solve all the problems, so there will be additional water sewer work when we get through the grant process and the engineering, et cetera. Uh, just, people asked me about the, um, RBT court case. It went to court, the decision came down, it's in the hands of the lawyers, it's what I'm saying is under review. The lawyer of the prevailing side prepares a document, sends it to the other side, they review it, give it back to the judge, and the judge issues a final order. It's in that process of back and forth with attorneys in the court. So that's the update I have on that. I understand Bingo is back and up and running, so thank you to those that have done that, that was, from what I understand, well attended and of interest, so, good. Whatever we can do to keep those programs going, we'd like to try to help in that area. I have no other communications, I'd like to cover the calendar of events, so reports, police department first.
See, was there a question?
I think Mark just got to talk about it.
Okay. So what?
No, go ahead, sorry. He had a question about the website.
Huh.
Good afternoon, councilmen, citizens. Um, gonna go through the report here, which is gonna be very brief, which is good. Um, we have one DUI arrest, uh, this is gonna be from February 15th to March 15th. Uh, we had one domestic assault, um, two drug-related cases, uh, one theft. We pulled over our traffic stops, 41 traffic stops for the month. Um, six of those got a citation, the other 35 got warnings. Total calls of service was 248, which is down from the previous month of 264. Vehicle crashes are 13, on average, 13. I can say that, um, the crashes at the, um, Pilot parking lot have come down, and a lot of that's gonna really do for the factors of the management there. Um, they tend to call us fairly quickly if there's gonna be any issues or whatnot. So, traffic has slowed down in there as far as their speed, which that's what we've always wanted. Um, we haven't had any, um, wood, uh, crashes outside of Pilot on the main road, which is, which is good, a lot of that's gonna be more police presence, as we spoke with, um, two months ago, I guess it was, now, so, um, that's, that's good. So, um, so that's all I have as far as the numbers go. Um, and I just only got two other things to cover. Um, one, the fog. Um, as I was driving here and actually driving through town earlier, um, I noticed, uh, people just fail to turn their lights on. I guess it's because most of us have automatic lights, automatic come on. Um, I just ask citizens, please be cautious, turn your lights on, um, because I was actually almost T-bone coming to work, I'm coming here, because I didn't see the black car with no headlights. So, um, yeah, I had a conversation with them, they turn the lights on, so, um, just, uh, be mindful of that, please. Um, and the last thing I wanna go over, um, I'm gonna read briefly something here, if you could bear with me, it won't take a lot of time. This happened in, uh, I wanna say South Carolina, this report's South Carolina. Um, an Aiken County man has, um, been charged for sexual assault of a girl over a number of years. Aiken County Sheriff's Department arrested Stephen Coles Gray, 46-years-old, of, uh, Warrenville, on March 18th, according to the Sheriff's Department. He'd been sexually assaulting his daughter, um, since 2015, she's 19 now. Um, you're, you're wondering why I'm going over this. This young lady came to our apartment, um, three weeks ago on Saturday, she was visiting a family. She came up and spoke with Sergeant Carteron, she told her side of the story, he called me, we started investigation. So, we got as much information as we could from her. The obvious question was, why haven't you reported this to your local law enforcement? She said she didn't feel comfortable. So, her family member, who I will not name, who lives in Montegoat, said, "I feel comfortable with you going to our department, our police department." So, she came to our police departments, we got the ball rolling, got her information, got in contact with, uh, an investigator immediately. She was back in her hometown that following Tuesday, they did a report, we followed up with our reports, and I'm happy to say that this individual's probably gonna go to jail for about 40 years. Um, I'm very, very happy, um, we're so pleased, you know, that the community feels comfortable with our police departments. You know, no matter what we do, how we do our job sometimes, sometimes we might have complaints, but I've always said, at the end of the day, it's to protect our citizens and our visitors. And this just happened to be a visitor of one of our citizens, so, um, I would, I'd like to, you know, give a handout to Sergeant Carteron for really, really putting in the work, uh, following up, and then, um, it just goes to show you that when you police in a small town and you put the small town first, good things happen. So I just wanted to bring that to light.
Certainly, uh, as you've just heard, you're to be commended in your department, to be commended for that kind of transparency and inter-agency cooperation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's all those factors that has made that case fortunately a success, and thank you for the work that you and your officers do.
Thank you.
That's very good. Any questions from the Alderman to the police chief?
Just, I didn't write it down, we talked about, uh, getting in on the state purchasing contract for police cars, we need to get that order and approve that in April, do you, do you know what the date is?
Well, obviously, the quicker that you can order them, the quicker you're gonna get the car, so the later you order it, it just pushes it back a mark, so, you're basically competing with other agencies, larger agencies, so, you know, you got the agencies ordering 150 cars or 75 cars, so, the agencies that order them first, or the agencies that are gonna receive them first.
So, if we're gonna do this, we should do it at the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be a budget item there, from there. Any other questions from the Alderman for the chief? Thank you, chief, nice job, thank you. Fire department's next.
Good evening.
Good evening. I don't think I have your, I don't have your report.
Did you email it? I just sent it today.
Okay.
The day of 15.
Yep. Keep, I just, didn't see it in my...
Go ahead.
Keep, go ahead and I'll bring it up.
So we ran 22 motion calls for the month of March. Uh, April 4th, we talked about the last meeting meetings about the first responder program. April the 4th, this Friday, starts our first class, so there's four of our guys in Montegoat going through it, that'll give us a total of, we'll have nine, so, there's, uh, already three or four existing EMTs on the departments, so this'll give four more to accompany that. Um, medical equipment, all the stuff's ready to go in service, so we're, we're rolling. Um, matter of fact, Wednesday, the state representative will come down, we're gonna have the class of the fire department, so she'll have to come and inspect it and give us the sales for a classroom setting, and hopefully we'll pass that and be ready to go Friday evening. That class will go roughly two months, for, for, uh, just a few nights a week, from 6 to 10. Then the guys will go in mid-June and take their state boards for their license, for their, uh, emergency medical response license, and I think, I don't think they're Chattanooga, I've not really ironed that out yet, the instructor's not really said yet, but, anyway, so we're excited about that. Um, we're working with Mueller, we talked about fire hydrants, I've actually contacted a fellow that's, uh, from Palmer, Eric Bergwell, works for Mueller, so, I've contacted Eric about a hydrant key to be able to work on these hydrants in the ground, and he's found one, he's trying to work out a deal with that to, to get it in our hands, so hopefully that'll go through. Um, that'll put, you know, the repairs for the hydrants, we'll be able to do in-house, like we were saying before, and save us some budget, hopefully, and, and save us some costs, so I'm kinda happy about that. Uh, we're back to working on pre-plans and hydrant maintenance, just, uh, the general exercise in the hydrants and start painting in spring weather again, so, hopefully the guys can get out and get some things going and keep us in NPA and ISO compliance. And I'd like to thank Dwight Lane back there with Crippled Hipper's Towing, and, and Joe from PPSI and Pelham, so last Wednesday, we had our extrication class, we actually, Dwight invited us to his property, which worked out great, we, we signed a release of liability, and all the guys and the trucks went to Dwight's property to do the extrication class. He set up several different scenarios with his tow truck, and we had vehicles overturned and on top of each other, and, what about, I think about 25 guys from three different departments checked into it, and it was an awesome night, we, we appreciate you Dwight, thank you. It's not in my report, Saturday, all that stuff's done, said, and done, we pulled two purchasing orders, have, uh, at the discretion of the state, we're from Southeast Tennessee Developments, so the loose equipment's hopefully ordered, the picket, the brush trucks ordered from, from the supplier in Wilson County Motors, so hopefully we'll get that in our possession finally, two years later. And I don't know anything about the lighter truck. Any questions on the fire department?
What's the difference between EMTA and EMTV?
EMTAs and EMT Advanced, and them guys can do a little bit of, you know, starting IVs, pushing some fluids, EMTV's just the basic level, uh, splinting, control the bleeds, uh, airway management, stuff like that. We're going to the first responders where we're going, so, that's just the basic start of it. I think a few of us may branch off and go into the EMT side of it, down the road, but with what we have, we're gonna work under Grand EMS's protocol with Don Hutchinson and his group, um, kind of a subsidiary of Grand EMS, so all of our supplies, like I was telling you, that we've used, that we've used out of the bag, will be replenished out of the ambulance, so, the, the, the protocol and the guidance, you know, we'll, we'll train hand in hand with the medics and the ambulances that's actually coming, so we'll go to the end services of Grand EMS to keep our CEUs up. I think it's a, gonna be a pretty awesome program for the city, I'm very excited about it, especially for our, for our elderly groups and our children, and, I mean, everybody alike, but I think this would be an awesome thing to do. Any questions on fire?
I know there'd been a time where you were talking about that, that you were gonna be driving the brush truck, that was before the Blazer, is, is that still your plan?
No, I'm gonna put, so, so the brush truck's gonna go strictly into fleet inventory, uh, be readily available for the guys, we're gonna try to set it up as a Type 6 engine as best as we can, um, there's not many of them in Grand D County, so, to this end, I'm kinda, right now, pushing towards urban interface, I mean, that's really where we're at, where we're getting to be, I hate to say these words, but we're getting to be in the Gatlinburg setting for, you know, these wooded areas, building homes and stuff in them, and, just, I mean, not, not too many areas fire-wise in our, in our district, so, I think this truck's gonna be a huge asset for us for wildland response and even structural support. Any other questions for me?
Going with the building?
The, building codes, or building inspections, I've done six inspections, there's been one sort of occupancy issue, there's eight permits issued, uh, I've assisted a few citizens with surveys and property lines, setback requirements and stuff of that nature, uh, spring, so we're kinda moving a little bit in the building department, several folks is calling, and Montegoat continues to, to building, so, building questions?
Any questions from the Alderman about the building department report? Okay, codes?
I'm gonna touch on one of the codes, I may as well do both, AJ standing right next to me, but, I just wanted to touch on the Super 8 case, because I brought that case to city court last, last week, and, um, so I've asked for a continuance on that case to, to get them complying on the junk vehicles in their lots, uh, we're trying to work on that, and, and there's, I don't know, I don't remember where we're at with it, they're gonna work on getting some documentation for me, right now, they're still not compliant, the judge is aware of that, they've been given stipulations with the court, and, and we'll follow that up on May the 22nd, it'll be the, be the next court date for the Super 8. Um, June 12th, there've been lots asking me about the burnout building, June 12th is the six-month deadline per city ordinance for that burnout building, so they've got six months window to do something with that building, not for sure where they're gonna go with that building, only thing I can tell you and promise you guys, as general public, that building will be brought up to 2018 building code standards, or I won't let nothing happen with that building. It'll be sprinkled, if, if we're drowned up, we're gonna fix the building here, it's not gonna be there. So, that's where I stand with that. Um, one residential property's been cited for maintenance issues, that's the rest of AJ's report, I just pretty well covered it.
Any questions from the Alderman?
You'd mentioned a couple of months ago that you were doing a comprehensive inventory of signs in town, what, what's the status of that project?
Yeah, so there's 26 signs, I think there were like 19 signs, I don't have the documentation, and, a lot of these folks, I'm just working, you know, case by case, we're calling them, letting them know you've got maintenance issues with your sign, um, some of them we've not gotten responses from, some of them's not even around here, you know, we've had to mail certified letters to them, we've got documentation that we've done that, um, we're still, still peddling error on them, that's, that's a, a lot of the report on the signs. Some of them has been, you know, uh, respective on it and, and gave us an answer, um, I don't know, it's, it's just, uh, that's an endless battle, I think, in this town, sign issues.
Okay, thank you.
And I encourage you all as a public, too, so the spring's coming, you know, animals, dogs, anything that you see running at large, that's, that's a nuisance to you or whatnot, I can't talk to the dog, he doesn't ever talk back, but if you can find out who's the owner of the dog, I'll definitely pay a visit to the owner and see if we can enforce the leash law for the animals and stuff. Anything that you see that we can be of help with for codes or anything like that, let City Hall know, and, and AJ, I'll be with you, so.
Very sad, the donut sign, up in the smoke.
Well, so, so I've talked to that property owner, that property owner's, he's, he's in the, in the, in the process right now of hopefully getting his building remediated, and hopefully, trying to get something on the agenda for, for leasing that out. So, that donut sign is made into the metal framework, so some kind of wrapping going around that donut, so in order to cut that donut off that sign, he's gonna have to damage top of the sign, so, and I, that's, that's where the, the donut's at.
Well, he, he can feel free to take the whole thing down.
That's right, yes. Yeah, Dean?
Okay. I've been told we have a homeless encampment down behind the burned-out motel.
You know what, that's, that's been an ongoing slang back and forth over the last three years that I've been here. I think there were three or four that was living in tents, we chased out of there, I hadn't heard the most recent, but I'll check it tomorrow.
Yeah, last week, I was told by some people that are in that area every day, and, and in fact, we were there talking, and, and two walked by, and I assumed they were going to the motel, but they didn't, they, there's a clearing behind the motel, it looks like, uh, the tree tremors or someone had, had cleared out a path.
10:11 or...
Well, I didn't go down there, but the person said it was, said it's Tent City.
We got flash and stretched out, we're living here. Well, I'll get PD tomorrow and see if we can, if we can dodge the rain tomorrow, I don't know what the weather is tomorrow, but as soon as the first dry day we've got, we'll run down and see if we make contact.
We had a gentleman eating out of the dumpster, and he had gun bag behind, so, or anywhere where, but we helped him eating out of the dumpster.
Local, I'll, I'll get with you on that. Any questions?
That's fine, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, thank you.
Parks and Recreation?
Oh. You want me to say something?
Well, if you want, other than that we're working on a couple of projects.
Well, we've, we've got baseball happening in Montegoat, so that's a positive, yeah, they're practicing two nights a week, hopefully April 18th, we'll have baseball played at basic in, uh, Montegoat, so, uh, that's a positive thing, we get the locks fixed, uh, we're planning on having the locks fixed, we're planning on having baseball played, so, uh, we're planning on, hey, where's, uh, Travis, you're, you're doing concessions on like the...
Yes.
Anyway, I thought, I think Randall can handle the lot, so I think he'll be okay. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you, just to be clear, they're Montegoat players with the Tracy players, it's a combined effort?
Montegoat players playing on, on Tracy, technically Tracy Tanes, but this is a Montegoat, it's one of, well, it's Tracy Tanes, but it's Montegoat players on those teams.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have enough Montegoat to make our own teams.
All right, thank you. Utilities, John?
I don't have any, English council does.
Alderman, you have any questions on utility?
I, I do. On, on the monthly report, uh, you, you were showing, uh, treaty that total wastewater, uh, at the plant, 14 million, 890, 896,000, and, uh, so basically, we're doubling, INI is doubling the capacity at the plant, according to those numbers, would that be a fair statement? So, and, and then if, if we went by the, the permit of 250 a day there, uh, we're only, that's, I think that only comes to 7 million, something, 500,000 or something, uh, but, but my point is, we, we spent, done all this work, and if you look at the report, are, are the gallons reduced any?
Not that I can tell much.
Okay.
I brought the flow in from this month, and on, and the rain, and on the 15th, uh, we got 2.8 acres of rain, and on the 16th, it was 968,761 gallons in the plant.
Right, how much, what did you, 900?
And before that, the dry week, it was running 265, 275, uh, 314, then it went up to that, and we had that 2.8 acre rain. And I couldn't tell by yesterday to today, 'cause it won't come off, it won't get rid of anymore.
But, but it seems like we spent all this money, and, and we see no improvement.
But let me say this, they fixed, we had a leak over here behind the school, that was going into the sewer, and, uh...
A water leak, or, or rain wa...
Yeah, water leak, it was a three-quarter inch line, but I figured it out.
14,000?
Yeah, 14,000 in a 24-hour period, and, and, uh, they rehabbed the bottom of the manhole, they finally got it done, they had to put a whole new bottom in of that manhole, because the sewer was coming in and the rainwater, all coming in, going right on down and going south side.
But, and, and my main concern is, we're getting ready to talk about Phase 2, and, and do we need to change our criteria in, in deciding what Phase 2 is going to be? It seems like we're not improving anything here.
Well, there's a couple places, Dean, I know of, that, that's like that one behind the school, and this one over here, uh, there's a third, you know where Marvin Church, where you, uh, if you go down the hill and go up that hall?
Of course.
Well, yeah, there's a major, major leak up in there, and, and that wasn't only fading in, but it's, I mean, a major leak.
Major leak of water getting in, or, of rainwater getting in, or, or our water getting in?
Rainwater.
So that's a drainage area from, up above where Kenneth Gibson lives, it comes down across the road, goes behind.
But now, we're, you know, we're just, I guess several places getting in that, but it wasn't in the fade in.
But it would appear to me, until, until the utility gets flow meters on these lift stations, that you're not gonna be able to isolate these numbers already, or how would you isolate these numbers?
Because Travis said a long time ago, if, if they fix one up here, Big Lake, it's gonna put pressure down here, and then you're gonna have another. My thing is, it's gonna be an ongoing thing, I don't think, of course, you won't hear of it.
Right. But, but, but I think that, what was the number, uh, it was gonna cost to put flow meters on lift stations we found the other day, and, we thought it was...
Five or something like that.
Yeah, it's kind of an insignificant number compared to what, uh, I mean, we're, we're treating, uh, you're... treating, uh, you're treating all that I and I with chemicals, aren't you? And, and the energy to run the pumps and?
Right, yeah.
Uh, I mean, it's just like it's...
We have chlorinate, deep chlorinate.
Right, yeah.
And when we get all the rain, you gotta raise the chlorination up. You gotta raise the deep chlor up.
So, so the cost of operation at the plant is double, could be as much as double what it should be?
Right.
Okay.
See, I found yesterday, back down at Mountain Inn, uh, let's see, not, what, yesterday, Friday, Thursday to Friday, there was a guy down there doing some mapping for LGA. And I, I noticed it before and I met him down there and he's got it marked now. But in their parking lot, there's a three inch hole and the cap being busted off of it. And I went down there and took a picture of what all the rain was. If you go down the curve that's coming from this side of Waffle House, or this side of motel, toll of Waffle House, running right down where they cut that concrete and running right in that three inch hole there and going right through there to lift it. But I, I mean, you go down and picture it or you make them fake? Can't give them nothing else?
Okay. And, and then on your report, it says active services. What, what, it's got three or 300 or what?
300.
What, that's how many customers?
Yeah.
We've got, okay, okay. And, uh, I'm gonna ask about the 2.6. Yeah. On, on, H on your report says I and I percent of metered sales, 2.6. And over here on the formulas, it says I and I percent of metered sales equals F slash D. What, what does that mean?
It's his figures. That's his numbers.
Yeah, so F, F being I and I in the number of gallons and D being the total wastewater service sold. I, I think that, I think that maybe the decimals in the wrong place because it has been running about 22 percent. And it makes sense with this rain that it was 26 percent. That, could that, could that be what's happening? I haven't done, I haven't checked the math on it, but that's my guess.
But you said F stood for what?
F is I and I in gallons, which is the difference between how much you treated and how much you sold.
So, D is what?
D is total wastewater service sold in gallons.
I and I percent is 2.6 percent.
That's gotta be higher than that.
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm guessing maybe just the decimals off by one. It's 26 percent. Cause it's been, you've been reporting 21 to 23 percent. Yeah.
But, but if we're treating at the plant, 14 million, almost 15 million gallons, correct? Is what this says. And then total wastewater, uh, sold in gallons is, is 4 million, correct?
Yeah. So the difference between those two should be I and I in gallons.
Which would be 10, 10, almost about 10 million gallons.
10, 7, 13 is what he's got.
Yeah.
And so, but it, but it, yeah, you're right. It's bigger than 2.6 percent. It's, it's a lot bigger than that.
Okay. Well, I didn't know what that was. But, but anyway, the point being, it appears to me we're not making very much headway on reducing the flow at the plant.
We ain't changing yet, no, we're not.
Okay. But Travis did tell us at the last meeting when we looked at the maps that, uh, the second phase was gonna make a greater impact on this. Uh, not that the first phase was just cosmetic. He showed us all kinds of pictures leaking manholes and taking pictures from the bottom of a manhole up to the top. And you can see daylight everywhere. And, you know, daylight's the goodest rain whenever it's worth.
I mean, they fixed several.
Yeah, yeah.
Several leaks.
They found one over behind the assembly grounds that was, the whole manhole was made out of brick.
We found that as well.
And that's just like a sieve, so.
We got one right there going down the same ground.
Yeah, got another one like that behind us.
Two down behind Mountain Inn, it may have worked.
Yeah. All right. Well, gentlemen, Dean, uh, for, point of information for you is we knew that, uh, phase one was not going to solve all the problems. Right. We had to start somewhere where the contract equal the budget amount. And that had to be rebid, as I recall.
And we haven't solved any of the problems.
We, I'm sorry?
We haven't solved any of the problems.
Well, yeah, we have too. It, it. Yeah, we solved some. We did a lot of work that was concerning lining of pipe, lining up pipe, uh, manhole work, as well as the camera and all the other work that has been ongoing. So it's, it's a work in progress. There will be a phase two to hopefully make a bigger dent. But, uh, phase one did what we could do based on the grant amount and the contract. So we'll continue to monitor that. Is phase two already scoped? Do we already know exactly where they're doing? Yes, notes have been, notes have been taken. Task order has not been drawn, but we're not ready for that next grant. We've identified the areas that we want in phase two, like these, the ones at the Mountain Inn and others. Okay. Yes, and South Side and all of that. They're done with that one?
I think they did, they did that just before you guys came on. So the, the smoke testing and the, and the camera work sort of identified all the issues. And then they were prioritized partly based on how bad they were, but also partly based on what could be aggregated so that it was a little bit cheaper per unit foot, so that they were working in some areas more intensively than others. Quick question. When we get big rain events like this, do you, does the I and I spike in real time or does it take a day?
Takes time.
So, so a day or two? Cause what I'm thinking is to get to Dean's question, if we really wanna know whether it's effective, we need to be looking at I and I related to the amount of rain. Sounds like the amount of rain that came a day or two before.
Right.
Uh, and, and then really know.
You gotta give your time to get down.
Yeah. And do we have that data? So I know you record rainfall and you record too or?
The water plant knows the rainfall. They got the rain gauge stuff out there. We, they email it to us at the end of the month.
But if we wanted to go back and look at how much the plant is processing on a day-to-day basis, is that in a single spreadsheet? So it'd be pretty easy?
They got comp just a month or four.
Okay. Well, but I mean, do you have a single spreadsheet of it or would somebody have to put it into a spreadsheet? Cause I'm thinking if, if we can get the rain, rainfall data, I have.
And talking about just rainfall and the flow?
Well, yeah, putting them side by side.
Yeah, well, I, I hear every day just for this month.
I think Travis had that, uh, the other day.
Well, what I'm wondering is if we can get it from before we started this sewer work and then after the sewer work, we might be able to compare something.
Any paperwork you need, you'll know if I'm in there. They'll get it out.
Okay, okay. All right. That's something we can work on.
Okay. Any other comments for utility? Street department? Do you have anything to you?
I don't. There's somebody else does.
You all have any questions for the street department?
I did appreciate, um, seeing folks out cleaning, making sure the culverts were clean in this rainfall today. It's, it's a good time to be doing it.
There was more rain this morning than most of Culver's town.
Yeah.
Are, are, are the sewer repair thing, where they've cut the roads and stuff, all my street has been repaired? Are they all repaired or?
They, they liked a little Friday afternoon. They said they would have to come back this week and finish up.
And you've inspected those and they meet, meet our?
Yeah.
Requirements?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I did that, uh, beautification and tree board.
Okay. Can you hear me better now? Um, first thing is the tree board, excuse me, it's the Tree Advisory Council now. Uh, it's not a tree board. And thank you to Lucy Keeble for chairing it, even if it's temporary. Uh, we are having an Arbor Day event, uh, on Thursday of this week. And we're praying that it doesn't rain. Um, if it does, we'll probably just come inside for the proclamation. Um, and Dan will prob, David will probably go on and, and plant the trees. Um, here are flyers. Y'all wanna pass them around? Lucy, do you wanna pass this around? Uh, we are working toward becoming a tree city. Uh, we can't apply for that until next January, but we're doing a proclamation, I mean, an Arbor Day celebration as part of that in order to become. And then if we become a tree city, then we can, uh, get more grants that way. Um, the, uh, public art group, uh, subcommitting is planning in the fall, a painting day where, um, we will be getting the students involved and the community to paint trash cans. You know, the public trash cans around are, um, not very pretty. And, and if Keith can find the money, we're gonna try and get some new trash cans, right? So, um, if not, uh, we'll have to paint some of the bad trash cans, which apparently don't have any bottoms. That's why we need new trash cans. So they put bags in, in order to get the trash. Um, the, um, we have not been able to start a landscaping committee, so beautification is just handling landscaping. And Dan Page, who is a local, um, landscape, uh, person, is, uh, going to work on that triangle behind the post office. You've probably seen that it's been churned up. Well, he went down and he, you know, we were hoping he could just start planting some, uh, plants that love sun and, um, can handle drought. Uh, but they came, uh, they hit rock and, and red clay and concrete and all sorts of things. So there's more work that needs to be done in order to plant. But we're gonna leave a space in the middle and hopefully we'll get some funding to have a, uh, public sculpture, uh, in the park, in that area. So we're hoping that's gonna happen sometime soon. Dan is donating his time and, uh, about 200 plants. And the city, the mayor's hoping to find some money, uh, to get the rest of the plants. Uh, the last thing I wanted to make you aware of, which we've already done, is, uh, the website. And can I turn off the light for a minute?
Yeah.
There, you can see it better. Well, what happened? There we go. It's just, I just love it. I think, uh, the woman who did it has done a wonderful job. All of the links aren't working quite yet. So if you see something that's not working, uh, let Melissa or Deb or me know and we will get it fixed. Any questions?
We've said it before, but thank you for all your work.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Imagine Mont Eagle?
Sure. Um, I think the, the, the big thing I wanna talk about with Imagine Mont Eagle is tomorrow's, uh, Planning Commission workshop, which the public is invited to. It starts at 2:30. Uh, we recently hired Cronberg and Associates to review our entire zoning ordinance. And they have made that review. And tomorrow is gonna be a, a temperature check. They're gonna talk to us a little bit about their preliminary impressions. Um, I, I think they're gonna, they've already told me they're gonna talk about some simplification of our zoning ordinance, cause it's, it's, it's pretty complicated for a town our size. Uh, so I'm pretty excited to hear about that. There, and, and from there, then we're gonna have a conversation tomorrow afternoon about what parts of, um, of their recommendations the Planning Commission likes and can implement on their own. And then how they can work, particularly in the downtown, to enliven the downtown. So that's, uh, please, please come if you're able to hear about that. Should be, should be a very interesting conversation. I've, um, I've had a, a couple of conversations with them about their, uh, impressions. And I think, um, they echo what a lot of other people have said, which is, which is nice. Um, so in, in addition to the beautification committee that, uh, that Martha talked about, we also, in the Imagine Mont Eagle, have stood up several subcommittees. So we have a subcommittee on, on beautification, as I said, on tourism and also on economic development. So these subcommittees right now are working on putting together their individual projects. Um, beautification and the tree board is, is a lot further, um, along than some of the other ones, cause they were already started actually a little bit before Imagine Mont Eagle. So that's good. Um, so again, that, that tree planting on Thursday, we're gonna be replacing some of those trees that had declined in the greenway. Um, those, I think Lucy Keeble was, was, um, key in getting some of that money donated for those trees. So we thank her for that. Um, the Economic Development Committee is gonna be meeting next week. Um, we're working on some of this, uh, Retail Academy data that I received from a, a grant that, that Grant wrote, um, that's helping us fine tune our marketing, marketing strategies to new businesses that wanna locate in Mont Eagle. Um, so there's some pretty interesting data in there. We're learning a lot about where we're, we're missing, uh, tax revenue in terms of where people are having to go somewhere else. So hopefully that'll help inform who we can recruit. Um, so we're excited to be working on that. Um, sort of what'll happen next is as, as these committees form their priorities, then we're gonna come back together as a steering committee and identify how the best way to move some of these priorities forward with. Some of those are gonna be, uh, grants. There's also a, a fundraising arm that's gonna be working, um, to try to identify what those sources can be. Um, so it, it's a, it's an ongoing process. I'm excited about the, um, the, the momentum we've got. If we can get, uh, just to the, these next phases of implementation are what I'm really excited about. So again, uh, all good. If you can come out tomorrow at 2:30, please do that. One other thing that has recently happened, I wrote a grant last month, uh, to a project called Resilient Communities that I had heard about because South Pittsburgh did it last year. Um, the town of Mont Eagle was selected along with the town of Saudi Daisy, um, to, uh, get free professional assistance. For us, it's about, um, our ongoing water and sewer issues. You know, with all this, uh, development that, that Travis spoke about, we gotta make sure we have adequate water resources and sewer resources to treat them. Um, so that's specifically what we're gonna be looking at over the next 10 months. We're gonna have a series of meetings, uh, about five to 10 hours a month over, over the next several months to look at these issues together with professionals and formulate a plan. After that, this group is gonna provide up to $20,000 in seed money, um, to begin the feasibility of implementation of the plan. So we'll, we'll figure out hopefully what needs to happen. Um, I will say we need community input. If you guys are on Mont Eagle Community News, you probably saw an email I sent out asking for citizens who are interested in water and sewer issues. I think I got four responses from that. Martha, Martha just told me that one of her neighbors is also interested. But if you are a citizen, we still have room for a couple more folks on that committee. Uh, Grant and I are both serving as, as government liaisons, but the, um, the funders really want this to be community driven. So if you're interested in serving on that, again, it's five to 10 hours a month, um, for about the next 10 months. And we'll be meeting here in Mont Eagle. Uh, just come see me afterwards. I'd love to get you, get you connected with that. But I'm excited about hopefully at least plotting a route towards some solutions for, for some of our water and sewer concerns. That's all I got.
Okay. Alderman reports. Dean, anything?
Uh, a couple of things. I didn't know, some of it may come up under old business. We, we talked about some things last month and said we would deal with them, uh, in March. Uh, you've already discussed the RBT litigation. I think, uh, is this something we wanna do under old business or you want me just, things that was in the minutes that we have not talked about yet? Or how do you wanna do it?
No, go ahead. Let's discuss them now.
The siren, uh, I call it the weather siren at the 911 center. We had said we were gonna get that checked out.
We did. And then speaking to some of the other communities, they no longer use their weather sirens. Uh, and we have to decide with 911 folks if they wanna continue that. Right now it's located at their building. Uh, the existing siren may need some work or replacement. And from what we've heard from other towns, we're not sure it's worth that investment, but we're continuing to look at that.
Uh, do we need to consult with, with Travis on that, on, on his, for, for next month or?
Travis, Travis who? Which one? Travis, well, I'm not sure that it's used for fire calls anymore. If it's for weather alerts, um, some towns have them. A lot of have discontinued due to maintenance and technology replacing sirens. Uh, there's cell phones and emails and all sorts of things. I have received, uh, communication from Grundy County on my phone and you sign up for those notifications. So that's part of the discussion is do we need one with new technology? Do, do we know if it works? No, it doesn't work. They looked at it to make repairs and I'm getting estimates to replace it or repair it.
I mean, it went off.
Yeah.
Last week.
It went off as part of a test, but to be cycled properly and used is another issue from what I understand. What else, Dean?
Uh, we, there was discussion about if we had the possibility of, uh, mapping on utility lines and stuff, uh, to have a map in here, uh, like we do the, uh, zoning map, which is, I think is outdated and was supposed to have been replaced two, three months ago upon the zoning. Uh, and then, uh, the, uh, we were gonna check, contact T-Dot about trying to set up some, some discussion with them on, uh, the pilot, uh, traffic and, and down at McDonald's on, on Renzness Road. Have, have we heard anything from them?
No, I contacted them. I'm waiting for a call back. I believe, so that's that one. I believe this is the most current, um, zoning map that's out. I believe this is the most current zoning map that Southeast Tennessee Development brought us. So, we can check that tomorrow evening if there's more to come. And what was the third point that you just mentioned?
The TDOT, McDonald's, the map utility, I think.
Oh, the utility map.
Did we ever, yeah, did we ever determine whether that was confidential, classified security, whatever? Because we don't want our utilities in public, or public hands?
Right, the T A U D session that I went to with cybersecurity and what others, other communiques are coming out of the governor's office, we want to safeguard that as best as possible. We don't want people tampering with water or sewer projects or lines. But we can have one in City Hall for review by appointment if necessary. And I think we just need to get that from Travis Wilson.
So, I got the raw data from Travis in the last month. And Cronberg made this map, but this is all the most up-to-date data. So, we can do, now that I've got the raw data, we can play with it and put up what we want. That's got some walkable stuff over the top of it, but that's water hydrants, grace. That's all the water and sewer infrastructure.
So, did, so am I hearing that from a security standpoint, we can't put a map of this on the wall for us to be referencing on a regular basis?
I would say in the map room, yes. I don't know, we're here in public.
Okay. I assume under old business, we'll do Dennis Congrove with them or Travis, I'm sorry Travis, that interrupted you?
No, I just, I'm going to backpedal your, your sign. I'll, I'll add what Greg said about the Everbridge system whenever you're done.
Yeah, I can share with you too.
The, the Everbridge system that Mayor mentioned, I don't know how many of you, is anybody in the room from Mayor with the Everbridge system for Grundy County? Okay, so this is a, this is an emergency preparedness system. I don't know, probably four years ago it was online and they had some glitches with the system. About 3 o'clock in the morning, it sent everybody a nice couple of alerts for no reason. So, now they're revamping that system. Matt Griffith, the, the new Grundy M A director is kind of heading that. If, if anybody in the room is interested in that, I could come up with a, with a contact sheet for you. I don't know what would be the best thing to do with that, put it on the website or get a, you know, through the City Hall so you can register for it. I'll pass the information on to Matt Griffith. But that's, that's the new modern storm alert system is this Everbridge. And I don't know how fluent it is with us.
Well, Marion County had an emergency alert system too. And it seemed that they rolled it out and we got messages for a while and then it kind of went solid.
I understand.
Do you know anything about?
No, but I'll check into that.
No, 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 not on you. I'm asking, I'm, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I'll dig around and, seems like we're interested in it.
Mayor, you don't have to do everything. You can, you can delegate as you say.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
It would seem to me that we need a marketing campaign to the citizens of Mont Eagle to sign up for these services.
Yes.
Because a lot of people don't know that they're available.
Okay, good point, and we'll work on that. We'll do that. Anything else, Dean?
No.
Grant? Nothing. Dan?
No.
Nate? Okay. And I have nothing else. Under new business, there's a first reading of ordinance 03-25, additional requirements for special exceptions.
What about the old business?
What old business? I don't have anything on the agenda for old business.
But we had told Dennis Congrove and others, I think we were going to have a map or have some position on the, the street thing without going into all-night session.
Well, if you all want to get into that and I haven't, when I called for citizen comments, no one came forward. But if you have a discussion on that, let's start that discussion.
Well, we had told Dennis and, and that, that we would deal with that. And then I think Lucy had sent emails out about her area and, and the back.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Mr. O'Neil, as I understand it, before the meeting came to me, I wanted to do a little, do a little more research and.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that we, last night we had said it would be dealt with at the March meeting.
Yeah, there, there's more information, as you all know, that comes out on a regular basis. I understand on the Cosgrove piece that there are surveys that show that property goes into that road. We need, I'd like to see copies of that. I heard about it third-hand, it was on Facebook, which I do not subscribe to and don't plan to. But if there are surveys or plans or information from any of the property owners, I think they know by now to come forward and present it. So, I don't know what the status is on that road. I'm aware of Lucy's feelings and Mr. O'Neil's feelings about Unaca Drive and the start and stop of that road and all of that. So, I think that's going to require more research than we're prepared to do in the short term.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we had said we would bring it up at March, so we brought it up.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do think that North Bluff, Jeff and I were looking through some of the old maps and were able to find a map that matched the road ordinance we were talking about last month.
For North Bluff?
Yeah, and it's signed by, by Marilyn. It was the, the map that was in the ordinance.
I don't recall you showing that to me, but that's all right. We'll take a look at it when you can.
We did. So, it's, it's in the map room. It's in the map room now.
I'd appreciate you going over that with you at your earliest convenience. Lucy?
I guess I need to say something or ask a question or two. So, I'm Lucy Keeble. I live at 104 Unaca Drive. And somehow, Unaca Drive got on an agenda to be discussed as turning our private road into a public road, which I still don't understand what the genesis of this was. You mentioned Jeff O'Neil, maybe he could speak to this? Because we're, we, the residents who live at Unaca Drive, which is a gravel dirt road and has been since, well, we can go back to 1912. It's never been maintained by the city. It's not maintained by the city now. And we were really quite surprised to find out that our private driveway was under discussion for any reason whatsoever. So, I'd just like to understand why, Mayor. Why is our road being discussed? And what does Jeff O'Neil have to share that would shed some light on this?
Well, first of all, for Mr. O'Neil's part, I don't know if he wants to speak now or continue his research. I only got involved because an attorney contacted our attorney, number one. Number two, there seems to be the history of Unaca Drive and where it started and stopped, et cetera, et cetera. And my feeling is it takes a lot of research. It's not really wide enough to be a two-lane road. It ends in a cul-de-sac.
It's barely got to be a one-lane.
Well, it ends in a cul-de-sac and I don't know what's what. So, I think, that's why I think it needs further analysis and information.
Okay. Well, I think we have the history and we have the residents and we have the witnesses to the history. Jim Waller can talk about it going back to 1948. Carol Taylor, who grew up there, she's 79. She has given me her history, so I have that. I've got photographs from the camp showing the road and the campers walking to the gate, which is the entrance from the end of North Central onto our private drive.
So, is that?
Tell me about this. What does this mean?
Well, if you look at it, it plainly shows somebody's cut the Unaca sign down to where it originally was and zipped tied to the sign there. And if you go back and actually study the zoning map and everything else and look at in-hat, it shows that the Central Avenue went all the way down to the north side of Georgia.
I'd like to see that because I think that's an head word.
I think we just did this out of the meeting.
No, I think we should do it in the meeting. We brought this up. They brought it up here. I need to have a say. Now, I need to say something about this sign.
Okay.
Okay. So, Tom Taylor, Tommy Taylor contacted, and Jim, John, you may know this. He contacted someone in the city department after the 911 signs went up for the three properties that are down there, 84, 100, and 104. Tom Taylor, who lived down the private drive, asked the city if he could get a Unaca Drive sign. The city didn't put the sign up. Tom Taylor put the sign up. And then the sign was mowed over by probably Suquatche Valley because that was where they put the sign on the side of the Suquatche Valley Electric easement. So, my fellow E R took the sign that had been cut in half and he zipped tied it to the Cumberland Road sign so people would know where the driveway was. But this was not a city street. It's never been a city street. No gravel has ever been added to this road. It is private. It was Camp Unaca's driveway. It has been that way since the Taylors bought the property in 1912 from Bishop E E Haas. So, I beg to differ with my neighbor. He's got an agenda that has nothing to do with my driveway. It has something to do with his driveway and I'm not involved in that. But I want to go on record as saying that this is some bogus BS. Thank you.
Okay. So, that's part one of this discussion, Dean. I think it's going to take a little more research and several more meetings. Obviously, there's history that might have some gaps in it. So, we'll take a look and continue to work on it with the property owners. New business, the first reading of ordinance 03-25, the additional requirements for special exceptions. I'll accept a motion to accept ordinance 03-25 on first reading.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 03-25 on the first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, discussion on the motion? Any comments from the aldermen at this time?
So, there was a change in the verbiage on, on A or something, wasn't there, from the, our earlier discussion on the special exception request must conform to current growth or development plans? Where before, I think it just said any growth development or something. Was, was, was that not true?
Yeah, I think they had to do that before it went through the Planning Commission.
Well, it won't matter. It's in there on second reading, so this will be the final.
Right.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the first reading of this ordinance?
Just, just so everybody knows, this is an ordinance to supply criteria within the zoning ordinance for, to guide the Planning Commission or the Board of Zoning Appeals to, on special exception requests. So, one of the things that has been a persistent problem with our, or at least a, a problem that has come up several times is some of the ambiguity in our zoning ordinance. And this is just trying to help define things and give specific criteria.
And that's what tomorrow is all about anyway, to start that preview of ordinances and zoning?
Right, yeah.
So, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions from the aldermen? All those in favor of approving the first reading of ordinance 03-25, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have no further business unless there is anything from you all. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll get you after, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Okay, thank you. We're adjourned, yes?
I just wanted to ask, now, whatever happened with those lights and the exit ramps on the interstate? Maybe years ago?
Yeah, so.
I don't know.
It was, it was determined, Marilyn hired somebody to look at them and found that there was a problem in the underground conduit. And then recently, the mayor had hired Dennis Jacobs to look at it. And I think he came up with the same thing. He was going to try to work on them some, but he, he talked with Kevin.
I didn't understand the question.
The question is about the interstate lights.
Oh, the interstate lights, a circuit breaker has been replaced, a big one, not a little one, in your home. And something else in the electronics of it. We are waiting for good weather. We're now going to test the bulbs. If the bulbs work, we're going to change them to LED. That's the Hardee's interchange, so to speak, and then we'll work on 135. It's an ongoing process of finding problems and then supplies. I would ask you all that when I call for citizen comments, that would be the time to ask these types of questions. I mean, you're always welcome to ask your questions.
It would be a good idea.
Okay, we are adjourned. Aye.
Citizens comment after adjournment. Would it be possible to count the lamps that we have out in the city and maybe replace those bulbs? So, I for one personally would like to take all the lamps out of it.
Yeah, I think that's a good.
You mean along the greenway and? Along the greenway, but if we're going to have a round. We are, okay.
Then something under discussion.
Can I help you, Grant?
Yeah, they did. They're looking at the, they're looking at the criteria.